Almighty God, who have heaven and earth, we receive thee to inspire and guide all our councils and actions, so that we may always walk in the path of justice, love and charity for one another. Help us with thy grace to do all those things that promote the unity, happiness and prosperity of them who live. Amen. Welcome you all to our committee. Let me allow my distinguished brother to introduce himself. The gentleman.
Yes, my name is Dr. Tyto Stachimzam. I present Benywe Norguus in the chair of this committee. Thank you.
So again, you are welcome to this hearing today, and we are proud of your attendance. There's a whole lot of activities going on as we speak in the national assembly, in different committees and so on and so forth. And so ask if you can listen to both of us.
I'll just move straight to the matter, first on the floor, and add the clerk of the assembly, please, and now the first person.
So the first case is the General Act of the UNGA IND on behalf of Tungari Development Association versus Mesoscar and Medjua in the village. Is the Act of the UNGA around this? Okay, please, please, please. It's trat around.
All right, thank you so very much. This is the third hearing, the third of the conferences of, um, on this space. Now, we are hoping that by the course of the week to conclude this matter today. But I'm happy that both sides are present here. We have a letter from, from Mr. Akapta asking that we represent. Yes, okay. Um, so if you will, take a look.
Hi, Ty, I'm sorry. They do so many have come by the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee. I mean, truth, the word truth and nothing is necessary.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Alaji, are you with? Will, can you please tell us why you're here? Tell us why you're here, what you want, or what you get.
So we are here in respect of the contract, our way to Mesoscar and here. In respect of rehabilitation of Latvia, Awewi, Tungari. The road is uncompleted. The construction is from Latvia to Obi, to Awewi, to Tungari. They constructed the road from Latvia to Obi to Awewi. And from Awewi to Tungari is uncompleted. They only graded the road and put on lagerite. It is not asphalted. They did not put asphalt from Awewi to Tungari, which is 30 kilometers. The road is 118 kilometers. They constructed only 88 kilometers, which is from Latvia to Obi to Awewi. That of Awewi to Tungari, it was graded and later put upon it. What is on asphalted, they did not put asphalt on it. Therefore, as far as we're concerned, the road is uncompleted. Prompted by what has happened, the TUDO, which is Tungari Development Association, through their chairman and the community as a board, wrote a complaint later to the Prime Minister of Works. And the Prime Minister of Works replied the community. They said, the contract, the scope of work of the contract is for the company to construct only 88 kilometers. And they gave us a reference to Part 5, page 26 of the contract agreement. That is specifically what is stated here. I don't know precisely whether the ministry has to, scope of work. One classified and one declassified. Probably the one that is classified is off for public consumption. Meanwhile, the road was commissioned and the road was commissioned and handed over to the federal government. It is presumed the contract has been executed. There is discharge by performance, whereas it is not so. In the scope of work, in respect of their project brief, in respect of project brief and rehabilitation of Latvia to Tungari in Nasserau State, they specifically mentioned that the scope of work starts from Mararaba-Akunza runabout and passes through Obi Town, Awewi and terminates at Tungariwa. It is specifically written, this document is directed from there. This is their project brief, and it specifically says the scope of work is from Latvia to Tungari. The award letter too stated categorically that a word of contract for the rehabilitation of Latvia to Obi to Tungari in Nasserau State. It is categorically very clear. This work was commissioned and handed over to the federal government. In essence, what the law is saying is once the contract is commissioned, there is discharge by performance. That means the work has been executed. We don't know what scope of work they are talking about. We are not privy to it. What we are private is this one, and it is categorically stated here that it is 118 kilometers that is supposed to be constructed. That is one. Secondly, it is also specifically stated here, categorically and very clear, that 73 centimeter wide, uh, let me see. 73 meters wide carrier weight.
7.3 meters.
I'm sorry, 7.3 meters wide carrier weight. And 14 meters aspartic acid from Latvia to Tungari. It's very clear. That is precisely what they wrote here in their scope of work, which we are private to it. The one they quoted, we didn't see, and we don't know what he said. But they said in the contract agreement. Contract agreement, this is a fundamental terms in contract. It's very specific, Latvia construct rehabilitation of road from Latvia to Tungari. It's a fundamental terms in contract. Once you have to do an agreement in respect of that, the fundamental term has to be carried along. The second thing is they graded Latvia, I mean they graded Awewi to Tungari and put lagerite on it. Is it a corporate social responsibility? It is not. It is part of the contract. Let me give reference to the award letter. The award letter categorically stated that this offer of a word of contract is in accordance with the condition of contract tender document and as was advertised. It's, 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 it's written very clearly here. The call for tender.
What page is that?
Award letter, number two. Award letter. Number two, sir. It is categorically stated here that the offer of contract is in accordance with the condition of contract tender, tender document and as was advertised. Go back to their response from one point to zero. They said the call for tender stroke advertising by the federal government for the rehabilitation of Latvia to Obi to Awewi to Tungari road was advertised on 29 March 2010 in Derry, Tennessee. It's very clear. So if work is to be carried, it should not stop at, it has to reach Tungari. Because the award letter is very clear. And the award letter said the offer of a word of contract is in accordance with the condition of contract, contract tender document and as was advertised. Let me proceed. This is a contract on the seat, ordered by deed. That means it is a written contract. It is a formal contract. Should there be any contradiction whatsoever, it has to be written. The ministry did not categorically inform us. There is variation. There is waiver. There is rescission of the contract. There is novation. They didn't tell us. This is a written contract, of course. It is supposed to be executed. It is. But they did not tell us that there is a variation of the contract, there is novation, there is rescission and there is waiver. And even if such a thing is existing, it has to be written. Probably the company will not show you the document that there is a variation in respect of this contract, and that is why they told you it's not executed for wrong. Awewi to Tungari. We are not expecting such at all.
Is that it? Would that be it?
No, sir. I just, I, let me talk to you, sir. Uh, the, the, the baby, the baby, I can say the asphalted baby has reached third trimester pregnancy, requires surgical operation. From you people for the baby to be delivered. We are grateful. You are our elders, you are our parents. We know that you are going to do the surgical operation. You will intervene, and you chose this work. We are here for it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Start from the, start from the mic. Sir, you will exactly what you said. Before then, let me allow my advisors to introduce themselves.
Thank you, my chair. Very sorry for coming that you're too late. Distinguished colleagues, our guest, my name is Senator Adrian Paddy. I present Kaddina Naut from Kaddina State, deputy chair of this committee. Thank you.
Okay, you heard the allegations against you?
I did, sir.
Okay. Before you start, what's your capacity in that company?
I'm the deputy managing director.
Oh, okay. So you're quite seized with your information?
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, about what he said, and I wish to respond as kind of actually the project on our own terms. Around 2020, uh, 2010, with a contract sum of 7.935 billion. And at that time, if you check the scope of work is fair enough, actually, we signed the scope of work, we declared. The scope of work, if permitted, to quickly go through is the description, the introductory part of it. It's saying the Latvia-Obi-Awetunga road is partly, that doctor, I thought that it got to a point where it stated the total length of the road, which is 100, I think, kilometers, actually, which dominates Tungari. But if you go further, but if you go further, the fourth line under the introductory part, it's saying that the section of the road being considered presently.
What page is that? If you have worked it out, would it?
No, no, no. It's the contract agreement, schedule number five, description and scope of works.
It's talking about five. Description of work. Is it, is it, is it, is it the part of schedule five or the number? Page what?
Uh, page 23 of the contract agreement. Under introduction. The fourth line states that the section of the road being considered presently is Latvia-Obi-Awetunga section, which is 88 kilometers. And that was where we actually terminated the project at that time. I also wish to state clearly here that on this particular issue, ICPC and ESSC have invited us to come and play here, which is actually the satisfactory. The project was delivered, commissioned.
Commissioned up to where?
Awewi, up to Awewi.
That's more than 80 kilometers.
Yes, that's what the client wanted us to do, and that's what we delivered on.
That's one 80 kilometers, right? Oh, that's 80 kilometers.
88 kilometers, not the total length.
That's what the client wanted you to do.
That, that was, yes, that was what they wanted us to do, and we delivered it.
Um, are you done?
Yes, I am, sir.
Sure. There was something more to say. I'm checking.
Uh, yeah. Actually, yes, because we actually responded to the letter from this distinguished house. It is important to note that there was no augmentation. There was no additional. There was nothing in addition to what was given to us as in the contract sum. There was no augmentation. The project was given to us as a contract sum of 7 billion 935 million 44,748 naira. And we don't claim anything later. I think we would like to equally implore the distinguished senior to really come into this table with the view of letting this issue to raise once and for all. They should channel their energy to the right direction whereby we wish the road to be done as in, actually, we wish this going, and we are willing to work. If they actually give us the caution to continue, we'll do it.
Do you, are you in possession of this, their petition?
No, I'm not, uh, I'm not opportune to have it.
You're not.
Yeah, that's, because, uh, videos.
There is, there is something here. Come, can someone, can someone take, come and take this to see. Come and take this to see.
Yes, is that in this contract? If you check this report, is that?
They wrote?
This page, this, uh, in the contract agreement, this is part of the page, this is, yes. Now, if you go through the fourth line. Here, it says this section of the road being considered presently. It's written that which time it is at now. Like this, and that was what I actually wanted to point out.
At. But I want you to read it, I want you to read it. Give him to read it.
Okay. Uh, the scope of works starts from Mararaba-Akunza road about, runabout and passes through Obi Town to Awewi and terminates at Tungari by river with the other side of the river in Tarama State. I agreed to this, and this is my response to it at that time. I pointed the attention to the contract agreement, page 23, under the introduction description. If we go through from the line, the fourth line there, it says that the section of the road being considered presently is Latvia-Obi-Awetunga section, which is 88 kilometers.
Okay, is that, is that?
That was what they gave us to read.
Is that then the, is that then the contract sum of 7.7 billion?
Yes, sir.
And that's what you did and commissioned?
That was what we did and commissioned.
I'm on here, Tungari Development Association. You heard it. You hear what it said?
Yep.
No.
Let me, let me.
We start with your, your response.
Any response?
Okay, why? Just don't.
The gentleman said. The gentleman said, would you channel our complaint?
No, no, no. No, probably not.
I should forget about that.
Respond to what you just said. Let me explain what I understand.
Okay. That the contract sum of 7.7 billion.
Yes, sir.
That was awarded to them.
Yes, sir.
Was to construct the road from Latvia through Obi and Awewi, a total of 88 kilometers.
Yes, sir. You say this road connected to the local highway direct as our state, maybe Obi, Tina and Awewi to Tungari, the state capital?
Yes, sir.
And that's what 7.8 billion that was given to them covers.
Yes, sir.
And that's exactly what you did and commissioned.
I agree, sir.
So I was saying, but I also looked at contract.
Award letter, award letter, sir.
I also look at the scope of work. The scope of work is saying that issue and contract. It's the other side of the river. Uh, it's going to include design, construction of about 188 kilometers section of the road. So.
Their word letter is very clear, sir. It's very good for you.
No, no, I, I, it's, hold on, I'm just, hold on. No rush. All right. We'll get to it later. No rush. The, what they have given to us is a special of, ask them of what, again, it says rehabilitation of Latvia-Obi-Awetunga road, that's for our state. Obi-Awetunga road in Tarama State. And it said that what you consider then is 88 kilometers. I'm trying to put the time for me for myself up for the committee. Whether or not it does, the construction that the debt is supposed to end up at the other side of the river in Tungari, from what they have provided in finance for is 88 kilometers. Total contract has a contract description with end that the other side of Tungari. That's total contract. But it also said here, well, the section, it says the section of the road being considered presently, that's, that's what is weighing in my mind. As whether or not that contract, if it were to end up at Tungari, will it still remain at 7.7 billion or maybe more than 7.7 billion? So the only way we can find out is to either invite the shop boss or the landlord to tell us clearly the portion of this contract. Thank you, sir. Because we can just sit here, one over again, and we need to, to what he imagined and what he managed. Sir, this, these two documents are very clear to me. One saying 180 kilometers, also 88 kilometers. And they are both documents from Tarama State Works. What I want to know from Tarama State Works, what did they pay for? Did they pay this 7.7 billion that they paid? Was it for 88 kilometers or for 118 kilometers? If it says for 118 kilometers, then they are over the site. Do you understand, sir?
Yes, sir.
Can I just? Okay, why?
Sir, I. It's good that you said your own thing, right there. It's a good answer. But I wish you can take your time to go through that one later.
Oh, I'm still, I'm, I'm a lawyer, sir. I'm a lawyer of thirty nine years.
That is interesting, sir. And secondly, sir.
Not, not going to decide.
And secondly, sir, this is. This is a contract on that sea or made by deed, made by deed.
Yeah, but.
This is very clear that if there is any variation, novation, sir, rescission and waiver, this thing is very clear, like, it has to be written.
Sorry, excuse me. I think the best thing that we can do in order to clarify this situation was said by the chairman. There are two parties to this matter. Uh, tried, uh, what do you call it, company, and then the shop, federal shop. They are not here. You are the one that is. It's good that you worked, you bring this.
It's very good, yes.
It's very, very good that you bring this on there. So that at least our, our society, our government should change by people of, by companies. And we are so happy that you, at least, you have taken the bull by the hole to bring this matter.
Very, very good.
The next thing that we do in order to ascertain the true situation of this is to either invite the federal shop or to write to them for explanation as far as this matter is outside. So I think you don't have to, at least you have done now. Your best is to be serious today when you are outside. So let us allow the committee now to do further investigation. Are you, are you satisfied?
No, I was thinking the documents people.
No, it's the documents. Documents can speak. No, it's not always the case. Let the mission, federal mission was come and say, yes, what you people are saying is a right thing. Or if what he has said is a right thing, why is it that the federal mission of us have now two documents? There is eighty eight kilometers, there is one, one one eighty kilometers. The only people that have come and tell us the best, I mean, that can tell us that this is eighty kilometers we're talking about is the federal mission of us now, even though they have, we have documents. But the documents are put within the charts. So who is the better person now to, to, to clarify the, the situation? Who is the better person now? When do you make that, companies? What do we do? We call for.
If there is a waiver, sir, if there is a waiver. If there is a waiver, you can ask for the tolerance.
No, no.
Yes, sir.
You bring, bring that document. You have it, okay.
Okay, you want me to read it?
Yeah, read it.
But the section of the road being considered presently is Latvia Obi Awe Section, which is eighty eight kilometers.
Exactly.
You can imagine this, sir.
Exactly. So that document was not made by him. It wasn't made by him. There's also fear that the document you are, by the maker of the document that you are relying on. Do you understand?
I understand, sir.
Okay, so since the maker of that document is federal mission of works and these two documents are moving and then stand by side, they are saying to us that in the original, that's the, the, the contract award that they gave to them for which we have a copy, says up to Tonga River. He said that. And then he also came here in description and scope of works, said that, yes, this contract will end up at Tonga River, but presently, in other words, now, what we are doing is to end at, at Awe.
Who said?
No, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. That's what, I thought, you see, that's what I have before me.
I just wanted to.
So the only person that can decide this for me is neither you nor him. It has to be the maker. What has made this document, what ministry, administration what? So they will now have to tell me, or tell this committee that this seven point eight billion that was given to this contractor was to cover up to one hundred and eighty kilometers or was to cover up to eighty eight kilometers. Once I have that record before me, right, and it says it's to cover one eighty kilometers, they will go to site or me myself to drive to EFCC with the two documents, with the three documents now, to compare on the site. You understand what I'm saying? So if you sit on this check, you understand the dilemma that these two documents have placed us. It has to be planned out by the maker of these two documents. Fortunately, it's one ministry. All right, so we are going to ask, turn off your mind, turn off your mind. So we're going to ask you to be patient. So let us do it thoroughly. We approach, we are very, like my deputy said before, we are, you coming with such, um, petition. It's something that you desire. It's what you desire when this comes. You know, they always say that when you, when you, when you see something, you say something. You see something, you are saying something. And so that is what is guiding now of this conversation. And so by the time we hear from the federal mission of works, we will know whether or not they are in default or whether or not you misunderstood or misrepresented the contract. And that will definitely, um, uh, put the matter to rest. But what this has also done is to also awaken the federal mission of works, assuming it didn't cover the one eighteen, for them to now move back to look at it again. In our recommendation, we'll, we'll, we'll know what to say, we'll say what to say in that regard. So you will hear from the coming, from the clerk of the committee in no distant time, by the time we hear back from the federal mission of works, to either ask to come back or to advise you that in writing, not to make go back and forth, um, to see this position of the committee. Is that, is that okay?
We're very pleased.
All right, that's, that is your list committee. Thanks very much. These, um, matters are just similar. Call the case. You still want to say. The next case is between Mrs. Chin Yeri Rita under the PT, under the naked basis Democratic Republic of Congo Police. Is Mrs. Chin Yeri around? Okay, is the representative of the Nigerian Justice Bureau Commission around? So, sir, in the respect of this Mrs. Chin Yeri, she called me this morning and informed me that her husband says she should not appear in public except until that he got clearance from somewhere. So I now ask her to put it in writing and submit it to the committee so that the committee can write that. So we are here to receive that letter.
All right, talk, um, the case of, um, Oji, case of Mrs. Chin Yeri Rita of Nuzulikke versus Democratic Republic of Congo, uh, and policeman. And this is the first hearing. As the clerk has, uh, informed the honorable committee that Mrs. Chin Yeri Rita of Nuzulikke, who is the petitioner in this matter, called him to indicate that she will not be appearing. The husband asked her to appear in public, um, for whatever reason. And since she's the petitioner and she's not, are willing to appear in public and she has not given us any other alternative, we will have to adjourn this case semi-dire until such a time that we can, um, be allowed to, to look into the matter. So this committee will, will adjourn this case semi-dire.
The next case is between Mrs., uh, between. Okay, the next case is between Uyala Mo Chinui Joy basis Muzia Construction Limited. Uh, Mrs. Chinui has called also this morning that she has informed the office of the senator that made the petition that she and the respondent have settled. So I also told her that she need to inform the committee to in writing of that document.
Who, who is the, who is the, uh, who is the distinguished senator?
The, the distinguished senator was sit down.
All right, um, the case of, um, Ms. Uyala Mo Chinui Joy versus Nuzia Construction Company. As the clerk has, has informed this honorable committee, um, we will have to adjourn this case semi-dire, uh, to hear from distinguished senator Sita on the position of this matter, uh, or, and for Mrs. Chinui. Until we hear from them, again, the committee will adjourn this case semi-dire. Nice.
So the next case in between, he is a senior on behalf of the Gabriel Edahza basis sunny desk proper to see. Is he a senior around? Is Sadi best around? So, sir, in this, in the respect of this case, neither the petitioner nor the respondent are around.
Uh, this is, this will have the first, um, hearing in this matter. Okay, since both petitioner and respondents are not here, um, hearing, we will have to adjourn this matter, uh, until another hearing date, that's convenient for the committee. So this is also adjourned semi-dire. Um. I think we've come to the end of petitions today. But this is the end of our petitions today. And so, um, having come to the end of hearing, to this hearing, we'll adjourn this sitting uh, to another hearing date. Um, and so we adjourn semi-dire. Thank you.